All right, I guess everybody is with us that's gonna be with us. So, hey, good evening, everyone. This is the Planning Board meeting of May 26, 2020. And it's remotely via Zoom. So let me read the Governor's statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, subchapter 20, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Cava Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings as provided for in the order. So for this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting while in process may do by watching live by turning into Comcast Channel 15 on our Area 58 government access channel. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, will we post on the Town of Cava website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by sending an email to, and this is important, it's planning@caverm.gov. It goes planning@caverm.gov. And joining the meeting via the Zoom link or calling one of the access numbers listed below. And to all the abutters of the first subject, first meeting we're gonna have, public meeting, the abutters to the project were sent by mail. The meeting, join the Zoom meeting, I don't know if that's still the same, but we also have planning@cavermass.gov. And we also have telephone numbers with a meeting ID and password number so that people can join the meeting tonight. So the first thing we have tonight is a new public hearing, and I'll read the public hearing notice. So in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Cava zoning bylaw, the Cava Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 26, 2020 at 7:00 PM. It's gonna be remotely via Zoom on the application of Eric Pontiff requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 2330, 4341, and 4344 of the Cava zoning bylaw for the property located off Forest Street on Assessors Map 49, parcel 62-2 in Cava, Mass. to construct two commercial buildings. Building one is 7,490 square feet and is to be leased by Nutrient Ag Solutions. And building number two is 7,200 square feet and will be a craftsmen's building in the general business district. So any person's interested and wishing to be heard should, you can email the planning, email planning@caverm.gov. And a copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office. It can, and really, I don't know if it can be viewed, but during normal business hours, but it is also, all the plans and all the, any kind of memos that we get are also online at the Cava Mass Planning Board site. So Cava Planning Board, Bruce Mackey Chair, and the public, published dates were April 3rd and April 10th of 2020. And just before we start, I guess we should see who's here. I can see Jen is here. Jen was, Jen was right in front of me. And Will is here. Jim Hoffman.
I'm here.
Jim's here. And do we have a new member with us?
Ellen.
Yep.
Oh, Ellen, okay. Ellen's here. And Kevin is, is with us and listening.
I think he's dropped off.
Kevin dropped off. All right, well, I guess we have enough members of the board to.
Bruce.
Yes.
Bruce. This Will Sinclair have to abstain from this hearing because I'm a direct abutter. You will need Kevin.
All right.
Try to reach out to him.
Is Jack's mic off?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is. I just turned it back on. Thanks.
You've reached the country of my land, speaking in the talk over to Kevin Robinson. We are unable to get to the phone right now. Please leave your name, number, and a brief message when we're back to you soon. Thank you and have a great day.
No, no, no.
At the tone, please record your morning message. When you are finished recording, you may hang up or press no for more options.
Hi, Kevin, we need you at the meeting right now. So could you call Area 58? And they'll help you get on. Give you the number, but I can give you the number again. Area 58 is 508-866-1019. So 866-1019. But we're gonna have you on this meeting because Will isn't gonna be with us, so we have to have you. So give me a call as quick as you can. Tell me what you're gonna do, one way or the other.
Excuse me, Bruce?
I gave him a call and left him a message. He's not answering his phone.
So Bruce, we need, for the special permit, a minimum of four people to vote. And I believe we have, we have yourself, we have Jim.
Yeah.
Ellen as the alternate. And then we also have, I wanna say Madison, I'm sorry. Jen is our, is our four members available to vote.
Yeah, so we have, yeah, so we do have four. So it's me, Ellen, and Jim, and, and who's the, who's the other one? Who's?
Jen.
Oh, not Madison.
Oh, Jim.
He said.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Chairman.
Madison, I'm going, who's Madison?
I don't know how to switch it.
All right, all right. Okay, so I, yeah, let's, let's, let's continue then with the meeting. And this isn't gonna, we're not gonna make a decision tonight. We're gonna, we'll, we'll listen to, you know, what you have proposed tonight. We'll have Planning Board members ask questions. We'll set up a time for a site visit and, and then schedule a second meeting. So, and hopefully we can, we can get Kevin online with us, onboard with us at that time. So, yeah, so let's go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject? I'm Rob D'Ambroso, attorney for the petitioner Eric Pontiff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, I, I could confer with my client perhaps offline unless you feel comfortable speaking now, Eric, but you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion that if Kevin doesn't sit at this hearing, he won't be able to participate in a future hearing if the vote's not going to occur tonight. And then we'd be left with essentially needing a unanimous four-member vote, which is a very high bar for the applicant. I mean, I think we've got a very sound benign project, but I'm reluctant to paint ourselves into a corner where we need every single vote, all four, particularly this court issue, or mission next time. So I can talk to Eric, or Eric can voice his opinion if he's comfortable doing so, but my preference would be to see if we can get Kevin to join. Perhaps you could attend to another item on the agenda if you think he may join tonight because he was on earlier, wasn't he?
He was on and, and for whatever, we got disconnected and then I called him back and, and he didn't respond. So I don't know if there's a problem or what. But I think that he could, he doesn't have to be at this meeting tonight. We're not gonna vote tonight on this, like I said. I think he can, we can, we can do the Mullen Rule on this. What do you think, Mr. Walsh? If the town has accepted the Mullen Rule, then Kevin could read the materials as well as watch the, you know, the meeting. Before we could be, okay, to take a vote in a future meeting.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah. And I think we're getting at a point where we, you know, a next meeting, we may be able to hold it at Town Hall, or maybe we can have the members at Town Hall and then zoom in the participants depending if the limitation on 10 or more people is removed and, you know, the public is allowed into Town Hall. Right now, that's our limitation is that no outside people are allowed at Town Hall, no members of the public, I should say.
Okay.
Only board members are allowed into Town Hall.
So, so Mr. Walsh, the Town of Carver has in fact adopted the Mullen Rule?
I would have to, Will Sinclair is shaking his head, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've used the Mullen Rule before for other meetings, so I don't see why we couldn't use it for this particular meeting here tonight.
I mean, I was under the, well.
Yeah, call, yeah, I'll call Area 58.
I'll wait for Mr. Hoffman.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Sorry about that, I was just talking to Kevin and trying to talk him through getting back on.
Is he gonna?
He's gonna call Area 58 to have them help him.
Oh, good, so he'll join.
So, well, let's see what else we have.
Well, I guess we could put this on hold and go to Limbia's Path until we get Kevin with us.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
You want to do that, Jim? Are you ready to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I just say just have it in a motion to place, motion to put it on delay while you wait for the last member to come on and move on to other business. But you need to do that in a motion, I can't do that motion.
I think someone just came on. I don't know if that's Kevin.
That might be Kevin.
Is that you, Kevin?
It might be. So Christian online?
Lou.
The Christian?
Yes, this is Christian.
Okay, this is Christian Davenport, who is here with us on Kingsbury Hollow. And actually, so I guess the first order of business, I guess, would be to follow Will's suggestion to do the motion and vote to hold this public hearing off for a few minutes until the, we get Kevin onboard, and then we can go into the other two pieces of business.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to postpone the public hearing until Kevin gets back on.
And then we can move. So Jim made the motion and Jen seconded. Those in favor? Aye. Oh, so we do a roll call vote? So Bruce Mackey, aye. Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Bogart?
Aye.
And, and Will?
I'm abstaining, you need to ask Ellen.
Oh, okay, and Ellen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, and then one abstention was Will. All right, so we'll move on to, may as well do Lim, Kingsbury Hollow, I guess, if we wanna talk about that. So what do you, what do you have on that, Jim?
Okay, so Kingsbury Hollow is looking for a release of the performance bond and a vote to kind of approve being accepted by the town. Last April, Professor O'Neill did an inspection on this, on the property. They came up with a punch list. They worked through it and then, you know, they checked back with Andy Glynn's of Professor O'Neill, John Wood of the fire department, and they, they're both satisfied with the work that they've done there. And so there's a kind of $46,000 performance bond that the town is holding, and so they, they need a vote to release that. And, and then what was the other, oh, to recommend to town meeting that the road be accepted.
Has our, our engineers looked at this?
Yes, Professor O'Neill looked at it. I posted something onto the, a copy of the report onto the town, the Planning Board website, and I believe I also emailed you copies of the report. And Professor O'Neill recommends, you know, moving forward with, you know, approving the subdivision. With approving the release of the bond and, so that's what we're looking for, and the acceptance of the road by the town.
Okay. All right. Okay, cuz I, that was, was that one of them that Andy visited to Andy Glynn's, the Professor O'Neill, did he visit that site over the weekend?
He did. Excuse me one second, I got Kevin on the line.
Okay.
Hi, Kevin, how you doing? Go back, meeting notice, Rich sent to me. There we go. All right, so, so here, okay, you got 929-205-6099. Okay, and then the meeting ID, you have a pen handy? So it's 893, 3, yep, 3247, 2918. And then there's a password. It's 023. That's it. Ah, that's weird. All right. But the business, so we'll be back. All right, we'll hope to hear from you soon. Bye. Okay, so Kevin is trying to log in through the phone, so he'll, he'll hopefully be on in a couple of seconds.
So that was, that's their quest. Christian, did you have any comments that you wanted to make through the chair?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
So Mr. Chair, through you?
Mm-hmm, yes, Will.
Thank you. It appears that everything that Professor O'Neill looked at, I just scrolled through the memo, it appears that that's all been done satisfactory. Am I reading that correctly, Jim?
That's correct.
So, so the steps would be is to approve, approve the, the return of the bond and also recommend bringing this to town meeting to accept the roadway?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, if you're ready, I'd make a motion to approve the release of the bond to Davenport Company for the red tail lane, excuse me, the, what is the subdivision?
Kingsbury Hollow.
Kingsbury Hollow. And also to recommend to bring to town meeting, the town accepting the roadways in, in Kingsbury Hollow. That is in a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Jen seconded, Will made the motion. Okay, so Bruce Mackey, aye. Will Sinclair?
Aye.
Ms. Bogart?
Aye.
And, see, Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
I'm here too, if you can hear me.
Kevin. Hey, Kevin. All right.
You look just like a phone.
Uh, we can't, we can't see you though. It's too bad. I did forget what you look like, but anyway, we'll have to wait for the next.
Oh, I, I look like that filthy grubby landscaper you saw last year.
Okay, did you hear anything about the Kingsbury Hollow?
I did not because I got, I just got back on one Jim can tell you.
Okay, so I don't think we need his vote anyway.
We have four already.
We already had four already, so, so, so we, maybe four, four, and, and one. No participation, I guess. So that, so that will, so that motion is, is good. So we're all set on that.
Bruce, you're saying four, four and one?
So we had four, four, and we had, and Kevin was abstaining, I guess, from that cuz he didn't, oh, I don't know how, how we, he didn't hear that, so he didn't vote on it.
Okay.
Four yeses, right?
Yes.
And one abstention. All right, so we're all set on that, so I don't know, I guess we could go to Limbia's Path and just get that out of the way, and then we'll go to the public hearing after that.
Mr. Chairman, I heard from the representatives from Limbia's Path, Professor O'Neill was to do the report last week, but Andy got sick and had to see his doctor because he had a COVID concern, but he's well, and he was able to go out on Monday to do the report. But Mr. Fashionetti is not able to be part of the meeting tonight. He hasn't had a chance to read the report, so they'll come back at the next meeting, you know, for the lot release.
Okay, so we'll table this discussion until the next meeting then. We don't have to vote on that, we just. Okay, so let's go back to the public hearing, which I already read. The public notice, and so, let me see. So this is the public hearing on the application of Eric Pontiff requesting a special permit in site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 2330, 4341, and 4344 of the Cava zoning bylaw for a property located off Forest Street on Assessors Map 49, parcel 62-6 in Cava, Mass. to construct two commercial buildings. So we'll go back to this, which we had, which was first on the agenda, but we had to hold off until Kevin could join us.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, William Sinclair will be abstaining because I'm a direct abutter. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jim?
Just want to let you know, I did receive an email today from an abutter that at the appropriate time I can read into the record.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're, we're ready to hear from, from the, the engineers and the, and the property owners, tell us about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, I can, I can hear you.
All right, great. Attorney Rob D'Ambroso again for the record, representing Eric Pontiff, the applicant. We have with us our civil engineer, Mark Flaherty of Flaherty and Stefani of Plymouth. And I'm gonna provide some introductory remarks, and then Mark will walk you through some slides to, you know, point out some key elements of the site, and then we're happy to field questions, all three of us, for that matter. You appreciate you accommodating us on Zoom tonight. I know it's not ideal, and I apologize for this eerie lighting that I have at my house. This is not my normal working area. Do we have Eric and Mark? Do anyone from Nutrien on this call today?
No, he wasn't able to make it, but I should be able to answer anything you're looking for about that.
Okay, very good. So just to give some background, I think a lot of you probably know this, but just to be clear, Mr. Pontiff is under contract to purchase the site in question, which is just shy of two acres. It's near the intersection of Forest Street and Route 58. And the plans that you've received illustrates the plans that he has for the site. Essentially, this is a relocation of an existing retail and wholesale establishment from one district, residential district, three Plymouth Street to here. It's Nutrien Ag Solutions, which some of you may know provides agricultural products such as fertilizer and other chemicals to cranberry growers and other end users. So again, this is, you know, a more appropriate location for such a facility, being in a general commercial zone. The location, I think, will be better for a number of reasons. It'll be more visible from the street. It'll certainly be a better complex for the business owners and operators. You know, it'll be a modern facility with good infrastructure and all proper protective measures, and really just a more suitable location, we feel, for a retail establishment such as this. Again, Mark will walk us through the plans. I just wanna point out that we've been through two rounds of peer review now with Professor O'Neill. Mr. Flaherty did a great job of quickly turning around all the comments, and we believe they've been addressed to the satisfaction, at least of the peer reviewer. We do, I do have an email here that Andy Glynn's sent to Jim Walsh saying that, you know, the comments, remaining comments are minor in nature, and he at least is of the opinion that the board could vote on the project so long as a condition were included allowing Professor O'Neill to do a final check for any remaining clarification that's necessary. So for what that's worth, I just wanted to make, bring that to everyone's attention. You know, on that note, I know you had mentioned your intention appears to be a site visit at a second hearing. You know, we've already continued once, so we'd love to obviously get through tonight if we can satisfy and address all your concerns, but certainly your prerogative to continue if necessary. But, you know, like most applicants, we'd love to get to work on the site as soon as we can. Really, that's all I have in terms of setting the stage. I'd like to turn over to Mark Flaherty now, and he can walk you through the slides if it pleases the board.
Yes, thank you. Jim, can you have it so I can share the screen and, so I can put my PowerPoint and walk through the slides?
Sure. So I'll hit the share button. Okay, I guess I've never done the share screen before, but are you able to link in?
Not yet. So.
I think you have to make him a co-host.
So. All right, my stuff popping up on the bottom.
Nothing yet as a co-host, Jim.
You're listed, Mark, you're listed as a co-host on the participants list.
Okay. Right here. So let me. Can we see? Come on. Co-host. All right, I'm trying to get my PowerPoint, I saw it. Is that better for the folks?
I don't mind still seeing Jim Walsh's screen.
Okay.
If everybody else seen.
You're. I'm trying to get you guys to see my PowerPoint right through here.
Hey Jim, if you were to disable your share screen, I think it would revert over to Mark's.
So your share screening. Stop sure, okay, there we go.
There we go.
Great. There we go.
You see my screen now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so my first screen is uh, Eric looking for special permits, multiple buildings on the lot. Uh, impervious area over ten thousand square feet because of the multiple buildings, and because nutrient A G solutions is gonna be stirring fertilizers in the, in what I call the front building, we need a special permit from, from the planning board. We anticipated that uh, Jeff Ottley and Mike Ottley were gonna be here, I placed that on the slide. This is the opening cover sheet, and if I was to zoom in here, we, can we all see this? Uh, we have uh, Forest Street, Route fifty-eight, Lillian Way. Uh, this is the Glass Company. Over in this area is where, is it Bay Dunes LLC recently received planning board approval for the multiple buildings over through here. This was another Jack Williams site. Uh, this is our locus lot for uh, sixty-two dash six. It's in the uh, general district, uh, general business district. Uh, the district line is at the back property line. This is Jack Williams other lot sixty-two dash six, it's a vacant lot. We have the Quickies Mart here, we got the landfill across the street. Uh, we got three or four residents along Anne Way with uh, up in this area with their they're kind of a deep wooded lots in the back. So that's just a kind of a general rundown of where we are on the screen. If I was to go to uh, the, the next site and I zoom out here. This is the this is the existing conditions. It's uh, again, here's the Glass Company, here's the two uh, buildings that were as recently approved. This circular line is uh, the D E P has placed a a well zone for Quickies that extended into our property. Uh, this is the clearing, the grass clearing that's down on Mr. Williams' present lot. Um, if you were to go out there, there is a series of old dirt mounds that are here back in this area and back over through here uh, that were placed many years ago, maybe by Mr. Williams or before that, as maybe a kind of a stockpile storage area. The next site shows pretty much what we're trying to do here on a, cause on a kind of a rendering. We would take the site, we'd have an entrance as farther away from the intersection with this island of Forest Street. Place a entrance going into the first building where Nutrient A G would set up its building on, on seventy, nearly seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh, they would, they would love this site because their present site doesn't have a loading zone. This would be Mr. Pontiff's back uh, Craftsman Tradesman Building with its five different bays. Nutrient A G Solution is looking at maybe leasing out three of these back, back bays, leaving two other, other bays that Mr. Pontiff might be able to get a tenants in there that would comply with the zoning uh, zoning bylaw for uses in this general business district. We have a series of landscaping that has been placed along the, the ten-foot side yard, uh, landscaping areas along the fifty-foot landscaping in the back. Again, this is the zone line. We have an extensive amount of landscaping in front, calls for twenty feet, and we've placed a, a number of different landscaping plants. Uh, we're talking about uh, pear tree, uh, pear trees, we're talking about uh, birch trees, cypress locusts. Uh, these, these larger symbols are red maple, uh, red maple trees that would be prominent across the site. We have sealant cypresses along this property line with the Glass Company and with uh, Bay, Bay Dunes LLC. We have a kind of a thick arborvitae um, site over in this area. Again, this is Mr. uh, Mr. Williams' vacant lot over here. We have a series of landscaping along through here. We've got uh, we got parking, we got uh, we got eight parking spaces here for the front building, and we got another five spaces back here, all which comply with the uh, the parking requirements of the town. Great, uh, this is going back through here. Here's, here's the actual site plan taking place. Uh, we have a landscaping scheduled through here. Again, sealant cypresses provide that nice border here. We've got the, um, we got the birch trees and we've got the uh, cypress piers over through here. We got pines going this way. We have a very wide entrance, rather than twenty-four feet, as called for the zoning bylaw, we have this as thirty feet to give plenty of access to any of the, the retailers that wanna show up and be able to back in to this parking space where they can pick up their supplies at this retail door. Uh, again, we have the Craftsman, Craftsman Building in the back that has five different five different bays. Uh, it's, the fire department has taken a look at the overall access to the site. There was a, there was an email from Jesse Brown uh, back in uh, early March. Hello, Mark, closes the master list of hazardous materials for the existing facility for nutrient. I don't believe we have an emergency plan documented electronically, but I'll take a look. Nutrient, Nutrient Solutions does have a emergency plan in place for their current building at plea, uh, three Plymouth Street. Additionally, the plans we discussed last week for attorney movements are acceptable by this department. So that would, that was one key factor that we wanted the fire department to weigh in, to be able to to gain access both into the property as well as out of the property. Andrew Glines of Fussin O'Neil has taken a look at that and has been satisfied with the overall access. The next slides calls for some grading that would take place. Uh, there's a little bit of a high side over here that would be graded down. This is an existing low area that um, any water generated in the site would be captured by an underground uh, drainage system here. The elevation of the street is one thirty-six, and the elevation back in this low area is one thirty-four. We got some slop, grading slopes that Mr. Williams was kind enough to give us a, give Eric an email saying that it's, it's okay for him to be able to slightly grade into this vacant lot over through here, so that we can have three to one slopes along this way. Uh, there, the mounds of dirt would be all graded out here and over in this area. The next slide calls for a, a, a utility system that would be set up. There'll be a new well placed in this corner that would feed the building and another water line that would feed the back building. All the septic system would be consolidated in a leaching area behind the, the Craftsman Trades Building. This would have a tank and a pump chamber. This too would have a tank and a pump chamber going into this leaching area. This is our underground drainage system that feeds a couple of catch basins here. Another catch basin here, a catch basin at the loading zone back in this area. We have roof drains that would be draining into the overall leaching system. Um, and we have a water quality inlet over in this area. All this is past muster with Fussin O'Neil. We have a drainage and utility schedule and a septic system schedule for uh, the contractor to follow in this area. Back in, back over through in this next slide, we, where's the next slide, right here? This that would be here. Um, this is our erosion control plan that would have a, a, a construction entrance with a wash down slope, some some sediment pockets over here to be able to catch any type of sediment that might come off, or any trucks that would get washed in. We have uh, protection of the catch basins, we have stockpile areas around. Uh, one thing that I didn't notice in the opening site plan is that this dash line over here is an emergency access that would, you know, any type of uh, emergency vehicles that would come to the site, if there was any type of blockage over here would have a twelve-foot emergency access running back on into Forest Street. But it wouldn't be used, we'd have a, some, a gate going across this way, so that, that was being placed. Some of the salient points in terms of uh, some of the details. We got the area of the lot of eighty-five thousand square feet, forty thousand square, forty, forty thousand square feet is required. We get now the, the front yard uh, works, we get a forty-foot setback off of Forest Street. We got uh, twenty-seven feet off the side yards. We got a fifty-foot off that rear yard with the residential buffer as required. We've got a building less than forty, forty square, forty feet high, which is thirty-five feet. We got the necessary lot width, uh, the building coverage is required to be fifty percent, we have seventeen. We've got the landscaping buffers that are in place. Uh, we got their, the necessary parking in place. I mentioned that rather than a twenty-four driveway width, we have thirty feet. Cape Cod berms, we got precast concrete sidewalks that are along the building. Lighting is some wall packs that are on the buildings. Uh, there's no sprinklers uh, anticipated on this, under this project. Uh, we have parking, uh, it's, we needed seven spaces, we're supplying eight for the back building, the Craftsman Tradesman Building. We needed five spaces and five are shown. We got traffic calculations, we got site distances that meet or exceed the requirement stack down over here. Uh, we required was two hundred and fifty feet, we have two hundred and seventy-five feet looking towards Route fifty-eight. Looking down Forest Street, we need two hundred and fifty, we got four hundred feet. We also supplied the planning board and Jim Walsh and Fussin O'Neil a narrative. We got a code and fire protection that was done under a separate engineering company at a Norwell called How's Fire Protection. That was a report that was issued. Part of the package, we have a drainage report. Uh, we met with the town on a pre-submitting meeting that with the town planner, Board of Health, Building Inspector, Fire Prevention Officer, and the DPW Director. Finally, these are some, some renderings of what Mr. Pontiff's building might look like. It's a, he's not, he's not married to any colors in particular right now, but that would be the front facade of the building. Uh, this would be a, another version, kind of a for the nutrient solutions. This would be the uh, back building, uh, a simple uh, Morton-style building in the back. And again, this is the other portion of the, of the Morton Building. In terms of uh, waivers that we might be looking at over in this area. We, if I can come over here and zoom in a little bit. We're looking at we're looking at a waiver of uh, from the town of Carver, section thirty-three, thirty. Allow for the front building to be classified as a combination of retail and storage, and the back building to be classified as Craftsman Tradesman under, under, uh, under contractors yard category. Uh, the justification is the parking spaces for the proposed buildings reflect the expected needs. Uh, there was a uh, a section that we wanted to be sure that we had a waiver from any type of interior landscaping areas because we were less than uh, the required amount of parking spaces. Uh, we didn't think we needed any kind of lot interior uh, island setting up. We have a landscaping requirement along the side property lines. Prove of our transformer inside the, the ten-foot. There's a, back on this site plan back over here. We have a transformer in this ten-foot area that will be that way, that we're looking for a waiver. Uh, this utility pole here, it made absolutely perfect sense to have the transformer back over in this corner. If I go back to over this way. Rather than locate all the trees on this heavily wooded lot, we've, we've shown the tree line. Fussin O'Neil was fine with that, with all these waivers. Finally, along the side. Let me go back over to the grading plan here. That would be up in this, nope, over here. Back out a little bit. Grading, grading, grading. So along this northern property line going down to this, this Bay Dunes LLC. There is a gray drop, a significant gray, gray drop that where where the engineers for Bay Dunes created this retaining wall along through here. We have a small four-foot retaining wall along our property line right in this area. So that is the waiver that we're asking from that three to one slope to create that retaining wall, so all the, so that all the drainage would come into our site and be able to be captured by our overall drainage system, so that would be a waiver for the planning board to consider and hopefully approve. So that's the overall um, presentation that I have. Uh, we're all here to answer any questions that, that you might have. I can, I can zoom any of these different drawings if you wanted to ask more specific questions about any aspect of the project. Again, uh, we felt that, that the two sites, that the overall site works fine from a grading utility in the overall site, the fire department has given us a blessing. Fussin O'Neil has uh, pretty much signed off on all aspects of their review. And um, I, we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, I do have a, a few questions. One was about the, the fire access to the buildings, and generally, the fire department um, likes to be able to access three sides. So I see in the front building that they can access uh, at least three sides. The rear building, I see they can access the front of the building. Can they also access to the rear, or was there any concern by the fire department to access?
I know there, uh, Bruce, there was no, there was no concern for the fire department to be able to get around that portion of, of, of the site. This is where the, where the septic system's going to be. If they were to fight a fire, this is the Glass Company that they could pull up through in this area. It's relatively low in this area that they could come through the Glass Company site to be able to fight a fire over in this area. They come at this point, but we feel that, you know, the fire department seems to be satisfied with the overall site at this point.
All right. All right, uh, and we're gonna have another meeting, I think, anyway, because we want to do a site visit, and I just want to make sure that the neighbors are included. But um, you know, maybe we could, I just want to check with the fire department again, just to make sure that they're okay with that rear, rear building. You went through the parking, I was a little concerned about the parking, but you, you explained that well, that we have uh, enough parking for both of those buildings. Um, the other thing that I don't see on this plan that we generally see on, on this type of plan is uh, dumpsters. Are there, are there dumpsters? Are there, are there dumpsters that are going to be placed on, on these?
Right. If you follow my sketch right over here, Bruce, I have a dumpster right in this corner.
Okay. And is that going to service both buildings?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Okay. Sometimes they're fenced. Sometimes we like them fenced.
Yeah, this is on my detail showed. I show how it's going to be screened and fenced off.
Okay, great. Okay. And then another thing we always ask about is, I know we haven't, hadn't had to worry about that the past couple of winters, but where would you put a lot of snow? Is there an area that you, if you had to clear, clear the parking?
On my, on my site plan, if I, I move things around over here. There is, we, we've, we've designated snowy areas over. We've got. Come on.
I know because of all the landscaping, it's a little difficult to, to place snow on top of.
The north, north edge mark, I think up to the north. There, there you go.
Yeah, we. I, I had it on one of my plans, Bruce. I don't see it right here, but I, I had, I had, I had designated a series of, of snow storage areas around through here. Back over in this area was snow storage. Again, yes, there is, there's some landscaping, but along this, this whole strip, there would be some landscaping that would take place. And because it's thirty feet wide versus twenty-four feet, even if there was a snowbank through here, it wouldn't be. It would cut down on the overall width, but we still have ample space to me, even the, the town twenty-four foot zoning by law for our driveway.
All right. All right. I was going to ask about the waivers, but you did explain that the waivers and you also noted that Fuss O'Neil was, was willing to, to go along with these waivers. So that answers pretty much all of the questions that I had. Is there anybody else that would like to, to have any, ask any questions?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. First, I just want to confirm you said about the lighting. It's just going to be on the building. There is no light post or anything like that.
Jim, you faded out a little bit on me.
Okay, the, the lighting?
The lighting, the lighting would be off the buildings. These little triangle areas are the, are the proposed lighting around the building.
So no light poles?
No light poles. And we've got, we got these wall packs all around through here.
Okay. And then about the area that would control any chemical spills, is it a dry tank?
So there is. Now, Mr. Chairman, there is a, there's a relatively short letter. Do you want me to talk about the, the fire protection code? The, with the How's letter has, it's in your packet, but if I read it relatively slowly, you can pick out. It was from Howe Engineers, which is a code and fire protection engineering out of Norwell. Dear Eric, Howe Engineers has prepared this letter to address issues raised by the Carver Fire Department relative to the new building located at sixty-six North Main Street in Carver. Nutrient A G will lease the entire building for the sale of fertilizers to the cranberry growing industry. The project will be permitted under the ninth edition of the Mass State Building Code and will also comply with five twenty-seven CMR of the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Code. Howe Engineers is a licensed fire protection engineering and code consulting firm located in Norwell. As requested in the letter dated January thirtieth by the Carver Fire Department. We have prepared the analysis below to address the various life safety items raised in item one. Item two will be addressed by Fussin O'Neil. Howe Engineers has reviewed the requirements for fire protection systems in both the building and fire codes. Per discussions with Mr. Pontiff, we understand the building would be less than seventy-five hundred gross square feet. As Mass MGL one forty-eight does not require the building to be sprinkled. Seven eighty-eight, seven eighty CMR building code also does not require the building to be sprinkled. The building would be considered a combination of Group B business, Group S one storage and Group M burgantine occupancies per the building code. Table nine oh three point two of the building code requires that buildings be sprinkled based on the size of the occupancy and other factors. Per review of table nine oh three, two of, of the building code. The building is less than the thresholds for each of the occupancies detailed above and therefore is not required to be sprinkled. This is the, the second page, which is pretty, pretty tight. Hazes Materials Analysis. Howe Engineers has also reviewed the materials proposed to be stored in the building. The information was dated January first, two thousand and eighteen. Given the data listed, Howe Engineers has confirmed that this is the most up to date list of materials proposed to be stored, both in the type and quantity of materials. Based on the information sent, the building will contain flammable liquids, corrosives and toxic liquids. This analysis was conducted to ensure the building is considered as per the occupancy listed above and not as a group H high hazardous occupancy. Group H occupancies are required to be fully sprinkled per the building code. Hazes materials are permitted to be stored in Group B M S one occupancies provided that the, that they are below the exempt amounts listed in table three oh seven and three oh seven two. Exceeding these amounts require the building to be considered Group H occupancy. The proposed quantities, this is all underlined, the proposed quantities and types of materials do not exceed the exempt amount of the building code. And thus the building is not considered a Group H occupancy and is not required to be sprinkled. The building will be considered a Group B slash M slash N S one occupancy and designed as a single control area building without separation where hazardous materials are stored below the exempt amount quantities. For the fire alarm system, the building will be provided with a fire alarm system that includes horns, strobes, heat detection throughout and a manual pull station that exits. The system will be monitored by the fire alarm panel. The fire alarm systems will be designed in accordance with the requirements of seven eight CMR, five twenty-seven CMR and the National Fire Protection Number seventy-two. Further, it should be noted that, that we would not recommend the presence of smoke detectors, given that the likelihood of dust creating false alarms. Spill containment. The project is provided with a spill containment, containment system, but this is not a building or fire code related requirements. As the building is not considered a Group H high hazard, spill containment is not required. As noted above, the building will be equipped with a six inch high steel containment barrier all around the interior. At any door openings, there will be a gate system that drops down to make that containment continuous in the event of spill occurs in the building. So that was, that was signed by Jeremy Mason, Associate Principal of the Howe Engineering Company.
And, and Mark, if I could just weigh in, and Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a brief remark, I mean, you know, and thank you, Mark. Mark illustrated kind of the protective measures. I mean, I think in summary, you know, in many cases, we've exceeded what's required. And I just wanted to highlight, you know, I, I think you have this. I know you can't really see it, but I can't share my screen. It's a hazmat inventory that the existing nutrient site produced. And just so you're aware, I mean, the, the, you know, a reference to hazardous materials has a negative connotation, but I actually went through this list, you know, and these are all scientific names. I typed on to Google and kind of looked them up. You know, we're talking about fungicides, disease control materials and fertilizers primarily, you know, this is not flammable fuel type materials or, you know, or, or really terribly toxic materials, in my opinion. These are more along the lines of things you might find at a Lowe's or a Home Depot in terms of, you know, garden care products. So I just wanted to, you know, make that note to the board to the extent you haven't had a chance to review the inventory.
Could I, could I also add one more thing, Bruce, to the overall mix?
Sure.
There, there is in the, there is a looney zone where materials would be brought in to, that would really please a nutrient that they have a loading dock where they don't have one in the other building. And there's a catch basin that goes into a large underground drainage system. And, but if there was a spill that ever took place in this loading zone. There is a, there's a level, there is a, an emergency gate valve that would take place that any, any pollutants that would get in this back parking lot before it got into this water quality inlet, the gate valve would shut down and the whole system would be isolated in place before overflowing into the existing drainage system. So not only do we have a, a kind of an interior six inch metal plate all around the interior, we also have this emergency gate valve system for any type of potential spills that would take place. The staff of the two buildings nutrient would be educated along with the fire department of way this, this gate valve, this manual gate valve would take place to close down the entire drainage system before it got into, into the drainage that got into the overall sand and groundwater system over through here. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
And, and Mark, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, you know, I, I think it is worth indicating since we're talking about, you know, potential pollutants and water quality. The existing site on Plymouth Road is within a hundred feet of an existing wetland. So in that regard, I think this is significant improvement and environmental betterment to have it in this location. Not only do we have superior protective measures, but it's just a superior site in terms of aquifer protection.
And you're storing the same type of chemicals that, that are on the Plymouth site? These are the same type of materials that you'll be storing in, at this site here?
Yeah, that's my understanding, Mr. Chairman. Eric, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's no major change to their business. You know, they've been in town for, you know, thirty, forty years under a different name and supplying the cranberry industry. So I think this is much more appropriate in zoning and protective measures as Rob mentioned.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other planning board members have any other questions?
Yeah. Good time to address the email that we got from Ms. Richards. Um, I know that she had a lot of concerns and some of them may have been talked about, but it would be nice if we could, like, like Jim Walsh said, he was going to read it into the record. It would be nice if it could be read. And then the applicants could address her, her concerns one by one, as if she was here speaking. So I don't know if you want, if you want.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering if any other planning board members had any other questions and I was gonna, I was gonna do that afterwards.
Yeah, no, I just want her stuff to be addressed.
Okay.
I have another, one more question too on the deliveries. For the retail, is the, there's going to be like a rotation for the truck deliveries? A set schedule or the truck is going to come anytime or, you know, trying to keep it as peaceful as possible for the neighbors.
Yeah, I think any deliveries would come during business hours. They operate from seven thirty to four thirty, Monday through Friday. I think it's also important to understand that the majority of their business takes place right about this time of year for three months, May, June and July. And that's the, the largest portion of fertilizer and other applications of the cranberry box. So I, you know, I think the winter is going to be totally benign in terms of no activity as well as the fall and early spring. So, and through the winter. So, you know, it's really a seasonal business and, and normal business hours.
Now, do they only sell the cranberry growers or will they open up to homeowners or some?
So they do about five percent of business outside the cranberry industry. And, you know, that consists of some supplies to landscapers as well as some homeowners. So the facility would be available for a homeowner to stop. But it's not necessarily catering to that type of activity. I think that, you know, the introduction of additional business would be welcome. And I think easier at this location where it's a commercial zone rather than the residential zone they're in now. But the main goal is to keep the business driving forward with the cranberry industry.
Okay. And, and just a question to go back to that, that chemical spill. First, back you, on the last was the mosquito place that we had, didn't, was that a, when they, we talked about the catch basin and inside the storage area? Do you remember that? I'm just trying to see if, if this is necessary, if we think it's necessary for something like that for this project. Whereas I think what, what Mark had just mentioned, was any container will be outside the building, correct? If there's any spillage.
So the building has a, what we'll call a steel curbing system around the whole interior. So if anything were to spill inside, it's contained within the building. Mark had addressed the issue of a way of closing off the drainage system. But one of the things that's important to understand is the facility doesn't have any open products. So I'm not familiar with what you mentioned about the mosquito company, but they might be mixing chemicals or, or creating, you know, filling spray tanks and that type of thing. If you were to picture a pallet load of fertilizer coming in the loading dock and fifty pound bags on it, then being transferred to a customer. Or a boxed chemical, like you pick up something that loads in a box, it came in on a pallet and the cranberry grower takes a, a box away. So there's never anything open on site. It's just the fact that those items come in on site and they don't hold a lot of inventory. You know, if a trailer load comes in this week, it's, it's gone by the end of the next week. So. Trying to give you some information on understanding the business and how it totally works.
So are you saying that what's going to be stored in there is actually gonna, it's, it's not going to be liquid, it's going to be just bagged, like, you know, fertilizer or so that, is that what you're saying? It's just going to be in bags or boxes and it's not going to be liquid?
Well, there's both liquid and dry. But I think the important thing to understand is that you're not bringing something in in bulk that's being transferred to smaller packages or handling of the material. It's all going to be contained in the original manufacturer's box or bag. And if it, if there were forty-eight, fifty pound bags on a pallet, maybe somebody comes in and buys ten bags at a time out of the forty-eight. So you're taking those bags off the pallet and transferring, but you'd never be opening the bag or opening the box or container and, and mixing something or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I, yeah, I thought we did have some underground tanks at the other site. They were dealing, I think, mostly with liquid chemicals there. But you're saying that the, the whole floor area is going to be covered in steel and it's going to be up to six inches on the sides of the foundation too?
Yeah, that's correct. There's nothing from a building or fire code that's requiring that. But the nutrient ag is from a corporate policy. That's their, their policy. So there's nothing driving that other than the, the tenant wanting to provide that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for addressing that. Cause I know that would concern some of the butters. Because, you know, once, who knows if it's something that after a pallet spills over of the liquids, you know, an accident, that type thing. I know there would be concern, what would happen to the, to the liquid. But I think you, you explained that pretty well. So thank you very much for, for answering.
I think we were concerned at the other site too, because it was near the, it was in the well area for the town well, and it was also near wetlands too. So I think that's why we, that's why that tank was, was provided for, for that particular site. Where it's not really applicable here.
As long as it's a plan in case something did spill, you know, hopefully it never happens, but at least there is a, it was thought about. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes. Yeah, you can ask a question. I'll ensure.
Does it affect the air quality? I mean, we've seen so much with the COVID virus. How things scatter within the air quality. Is there any chance of any of this getting into our air quality for people in that general area?
No, there's, there should be no issue associated with that because everything's going to be contained within its container. So nothing's being opened that would, you know, cause any type of air quality issue.
Thank you.
Kevin Robinson, do you have any questions?
Every question I have has been answered. I'm pretty familiar with them anyways, because obviously I've, being a landscaper, I've used their services.
All right. Okay, now I guess we could go on to, uh, Jim, you had Walsh, you had, uh, some questions from nearby residents?
Yes, I received a email today at about one, one thirty from, uh, Judy Richards at Five Lonely Way. And it says, Carver Planning Board, good afternoon. I am Judy Richards, Five Lonely Way, expressing concerns of the above property and the use of the commercial building that is proposed by Eric Pontiff. And the business, he plans on leasing building number one to Nutrient AG Solutions. My understanding is a toxic chemical warehouse and distribution business. My concerns are the private wells will become contaminated. My concerns that the residents in close proximity are unaware of what this business can and will do to our water supply. My concerns are the huge aquifer that is one of the biggest natural water supply in Plymouth County that is the same area that can and, and historical will be, and historically will become contaminated. My concerns are how there is a toxic dump across the street from the proposed project that was found to contaminate the pond and residential wells that it, uh, bordered. My question is, there's no containment of the toxic chemical plant in place. And my question is that no groundwater or aquifer flow chart was done. If the board in the town have a short memory, look at Green Street and Lakenham Street. I know that, uh, I know that the dump site was there before we knew what type of damage can be done from toxic waste. But now we do, so why let history repeat itself? As a taxpayer, I don't wanna pay for something down the road that I know was wrong to approve in the first place. Maybe a little more homework can be done on this proposed project. Thank you, Judy Richards, and dated, uh, five twenty-six, twenty twenty at one twenty-three P M.
I, I, I think if I may, are you looking for a response from us, Mr. Chairman, or would you like to?
Yes, please. Yeah, please respond.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to get Mark's thoughts on it, but I mean, I think that's what we've been discussing the last ten or fifteen minutes. And again, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the applicant did engage how engineers and they are a code specialist, a code and fire protection specialist. And they specifically in their review indicate that the building is not considered a group H high hazard facility. For that reason, spill containment as a matter of code is not even required. I think as Eric noted, you know, nutrient ag's policy, you know, call it a good neighbor policy, call it the, you know, sound corporate practice is to have what I would call belt and suspenders in addition to not mixing chemicals on site, uh, not opening containers on site. They have an internal spill containment barrier and, uh, and Mark also illustrated the, um, external, uh, you know, drainage, um, safeguard. So I, you know, again, I think we're by code, we don't need to do half of what's being done. It's being done to address these types of concerns and be proactive and be a good, uh, neighbor and, and good corporate citizen. So, um, I, I think we've addressed it, but happy to take any specific inquiries or maybe Mark wants to add to that.
I think the other important thing to understand is that, uh, this isn't a new business to the town. And, and we, we have a long history or nutrient ag has a long history in the town. So I think that, you know, anybody that was interested in doing a drive-by of their existing facility, uh, I think that would be welcome too.
And I'm told by Fire Prevention Officer Jesse Boyle that there is an emergency provision in place with nutrient A G that will just have to be updated with this new site. That, and along with the Board of Health suggesting that we do have some type of overall emergency shutdown system if there was any type of a spill in the, in the loading zone that would take place before it hits the drainage systems. The whole area being in the back all flows to the middle of the back parking area. So there'd be no water, um, getting off into any neighboring property. It's really a self-contained site. We've got the emergency, uh, gate valve in place. And I, I think we've done our best to contain anything that might take place in terms of a spill.
And, and I think again, just to reiterate the types of materials being stored here. You know, this is not the battery acid, these aren't highly flammable liquids. You know, these are, you know, agricultural applications.
If I could just ask a question, I know we spoke about the building in front, but you were also saying that, uh, this company's gonna lease, uh, three of the bays in the back. What's gonna be stored in the three bays in the rear building?
It would, it would be storage similar to the, uh, storage provided in the first building and any, space that they leased in that property would also contain the containment that we've discussed for the building.
Okay, so you do the steel floors with the, the six inch sides to contain anything? All right. All right.
Will that be for all the bays or just the bays that they rent? You know?
I think unless from a design perspective, it was more efficient to do the entire building. But I think it's more important to keep each tenant, uh, isolated. So if they had three of the bays, I think it'd be important to have that division and containment within their section of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Did we get any more, uh, emails, Jim, from any other residents with any other questions?
Um, that is the only one I received.
All right.
Double checking, done anything else?
If, yeah, if there isn't any more, uh, emails from the public and if the board doesn't have any questions, I'd like to talk about a time that we could go and visit the site uh, between now and the next meeting. And, uh, I think, I don't know if everybody, everybody wants to kind of take a look and see what they have on their schedule. Those schedules are kind of different, uh, these past couple of months, but, so I'm pretty much open to any time to go and visit the site. And I, I also spoke to Jim this afternoon and he said that, uh, it, there were, uh, the buildings have been staked and the parking area has been staked. Is that correct?
The buildings have been stapled, Bruce. And if the, we have the lot corners of the site that are going to be, that are staked out. Right now, the parking area is not staked out, but certainly you can envision if, uh, where the corners of the building are, you can see that everything else is pretty much paved between the two buildings.
Okay, um, if I could ask, uh, is, how about the entrance to the site? Is, is that?
Yeah, there's some flagging, uh, at the center line of the driveway coming in, Bruce.
Okay. I guess, you know, that would, that would be fine for me. Uh, I don't know if there's anything that any other planning board members would like to see. But, um, I guess it's a, it's not a huge site. So if we have the buildings there, we could kind of pace off where the parking areas are gonna be. And if we had the center of the entrance, at least we know where the, the entrance is. So we could, uh, visualize. Yeah. You know, mark that out. So, uh, to the planning board members, uh, when would you, uh, like to visit the site? And, you know, what I was also thinking too is, is, um, in Carver, we, we generally, uh, the planning board usually does a site visit and it's just for the planning board members only. Because if we have a bunch of the neighbors with us, it becomes more of a public meeting and it's just difficult to take meeting notes and, and stuff like that. So, um, what I was, uh, thinking and discussing with Jim Walsh, uh, this morning was, is that if, and if it's all right with the owner of the property and, uh, the engineers, if, uh, if a, uh, neighbor that abuts the property would like to also, uh, have a walk through, uh, see where the buildings are and, uh, and see where, uh, the screening is gonna be placed. If they would contact the, uh, planning office, talk to Jim Walsh and then maybe Jim Walsh can get in touch with, uh, with the people that need to, uh, walk them through. But the, the planning board will go through first and then we'll see if any of the neighbors are interested in, and if it's all right, maybe, uh, take the neighbors for a walk out there too, just to, if there's anybody that's concerned. So, uh, all right, uh, planning board members, when would you like to go down? Our next meeting is, uh, June ninth. So we have, uh, this week, we have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
I am not available this week, but next week I'm, I'm pretty free. So.
Any particular day, Jen?
I can be really flexible next week.
All right. Uh, Jim Hoffman.
Any day but Thursday next week, I'm good.
All right. Well, let's say, uh, Monday of next week. Is, does that work with everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
I know Will, Will is abstaining. I, I don't know, Kevin is, is sometimes busy anyway, but if, if Kevin had time, he wanted to see it. I, I know that either Jim and myself could, could bring him out to the site.
I'll try to remember what, what time are you planning on one, on Monday?
Yeah, okay, is that, so if Monday's, uh, good with, with everyone, how about Ellen?
That's fine.
So Ellen's good. Jim is good, Jen's good, and I'm good for Monday. What, what time, uh, would you people like to be out there? Would you like to do it? Uh, what would be a good time for you, Kevin? Would it be early in the morning, uh, you know, say like nine o'clock or? I know, uh, Jim Walsh gets in, oh, I, I was gonna ask Jim too. Would Monday be a good day for you, Jim?
Yeah, that works.
Well, what, uh, would it be the end of the day, Kevin, or would the beginning of the day work best?
Nine o'clock will probably work good.
So could we do, uh, nine o'clock, Monday morning?
Sounds good to me.
Where would we meet?
Well, let's talk to, um, Mr. Pontiff for who's gonna be out there with us to?
Probably the most convenient spot to park would be in the Quickies parking lot. Um, and we could cross the road, we could meet there and then cross the road and head in what we'll call the entrance that Mark has flagged for the project.
All right.
And I'm happy to be out there at, at nine o'clock on Monday if you want me there, Bruce.
Probably, I mean, uh, we probably only need one person to, yeah, somebody, just one person would, would be good.
Eric, do you wanna be there or myself?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be there, um, and, and, and your help would be helpful too, Mark, if you want, you're interested.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, so we'll, we'll be there at, uh, nine o'clock, Monday morning. So Kevin, that's when we'll, uh, we'll try to get together?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, at the Quickies. And, um, and then at our next meeting, um, you know, we'll have time to take a, take a look at this. And maybe Kevin can look at the landscaping out there. I mean, it looks more than adequate. And we'll, and, uh, and, but I also am concerned about, you know, what the neighbors are gonna see that about the property too. So, so at that time, and I think at the next meeting, we'll, we'll make our decision. I, I'm, you know, I'm sorry that we can't do it tonight. I know you've been put off, but, but, uh, because of the times and because we really can't have a public meeting, I just wanna make sure that, uh, the neighbors have a chance to respond. And, um, you know, after watching this, uh, if any of the neighbors do have any questions, they can get in touch with, uh, uh, Jim Walsh at, at the town hall, our town planner. Or, uh, and with any questions that they may have. And they can also get in touch with him if they, uh, if, if they felt that they wanted to walk the site and maybe we could get somebody to, to walk the site with them. So I think that's it for tonight for this. So we'll, uh, continue this meeting. Entertain a motion to continue, uh, this meeting to June ninth at seven o'clock.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Eric Pontiff to June ninth at seven o'clock.
I'll second.
So that was Jim Hoffman with Jen for the second. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, let me, uh, let me do the roll call. Bruce, aye, Jen?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And Will's abstaining and, uh, well, we can, Ellen?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we'll see everyone at nine o'clock, uh, Monday morning.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we've kind of gone backwards to, uh, agenda tonight. We started at the end and worked to the front. So, uh, do we have any planning board member notes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Will.
So I just wanna thank everybody. I know tonight's my last meeting. Hopefully we'll have an election on the sixth. And, um, we'll have a new member for the board. So I appreciate all you guys' help. It's been an honor to share with you guys over all these years and, um, we'll move on to a new regime, I guess. So thank you, everybody, for all your help and all your assistance.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for all the, all the years that you've been, ten years, uh, or since I've been here anyway. And, uh, want to thank you for all the help and, and guidance and assistance, uh, that you've given to the planning board and, and, and you will be missed, that's for sure. But we, I guess we have to start new members sometime, so I guess it's time for, for some new members. But I really appreciate all the work that you did, the, in all the subcommittees and, and, and all the things that you did, uh, for the planning board, uh, the, uh, bylaws, uh, for the solar projects and, and everything. Those were really tough and, uh, I don't think anybody could have handled them as well as you. So I, I do thank you for that.
And I'm sorry I didn't get to work with you at all, Will.
Yeah, but you're coming in.
Will, I had forgotten that tonight was gonna be your last meeting and I'm mad at you because I'm not gonna sit next to you anymore and my box isn't even next to your box on my screen. So I didn't get to sit next to you tonight and I've only been on the board for two years, but I can't tell you how much I've learned from you. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wanna thank you too, Will. You helped me a lot over these, my years have been six years now. So I, I appreciate all the help and, uh, you're gonna be missed, that's for sure. You'll be getting phone calls once in a while, don't worry about it.
I'm sure. I'm always available.
You're always a text away.
That's right.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Kevin, do you have anything to say?
And of course I've got to thank Will for everything that, uh, I have learned from him and his assistance in allowing me to to, uh, participate in the planning board and to better myself. So I do thank you, Will, and wish you the best of luck.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, with that, uh, planning director notes.
Thank you, Will, for the short time I've been here. You've been a great help. And, uh, really do appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
And have no other, have nothing else under planning director notes at the time.
All right. Um, we do have the minutes for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty?
I didn't get them, either of them.
April or May, so you didn't get them? Uh, yeah.
And I like double-checked my emails and the packets and I, I don't have them.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we table these? Because, All right, so why don't we, why don't we table these, because, I mean?
I, I triple-checked my email and all of the packets that, uh, that Jim has awesomely brought and they're just not in mine anywhere. Did you guys get the minutes via email?
I just wanna interject that, uh, Jill has been out. So she usually puts, you know, the packets together for everybody. And so, um, uh, her mother passed away, so she's been out for the, uh, last week or so. Uh, so that's my excuse for not giving the minutes to you.
We'll let it go this time, Jim.
Thank you. Did we lose Bruce?
I think you lost Bruce.
Yeah.
No.
Do you guys see a picture of a young boy in one of your boxes?
Yeah, it's Eric Pontiff.
Okay.
So Jim, take over the meeting.
My next meeting, June, June ninth.
Is it a town meeting? Was town meeting rescheduled to then?
Town meeting?
It was the fourth.
I'm getting a call from Bruce. Hi, Bruce. Yep. Jim Hoffman took over. Almost, he hasn't asked for a motion to adjourn yet.
I'm gonna make it.
Will's gonna make the motion.
Will asked, it's the last meeting.
So be it my last meeting to sign off, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
See ya. Motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right, thank you, see y'all later.
Thanks, good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.